...in life publications, otherwise known as press publications. Purpose of this hearing is to offer the public the opportunity to provide input on the proposed city budget for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2011, and ending April 30, 2012. In particular, we are interested in how our resources should be budgeted to meet the needs of our community. We will summarize the major provisions and follow with public comment. Ms. Powers? Ms. Powers? Mr. Wilson, would you please provide a summary of the budget?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Have a quick, few short slides, five with the cover here, so it should be pretty quick tonight. Just a couple of highlights from the document itself. Some important numbers. We go through these every year. Off of the property tax levy, due to the decline in the valuation of the properties, the tax rate did go up pretty significantly this year. It's up to .4125. You can see last year's rate, .3621. The sales tax rate that the city charges is consistent with last year's, 8.25, and there's the breakdown of how that is combined. Then the general fund. The major revenues are broken down in here. Sales tax accounts for just a little over 22.5%. Property tax levy, just a fraction under 22.5%. Telecom, 12.5%. Income tax, just under 9.5%. The non-home rule sales tax in the general capital projects fund, which is where we do the roadway projects, the sidewalks, the alleys, some of the other special projects, that accounts for a little over 63% of that budget. The utility tax, just under 26%. The remainder of that particular budget, the general capital projects fund, is a transfer in from the road and bridge fund. This year, there's a slight transfer in from the grant fund for the lighting project on Irving Park over the Salt Creek Bridge, and some miscellaneous interest earnings. And the water fund, highly leveraged in the water and sewer fees, 93.5%. With that, other things, just miscellaneous permit fees, discharge fees, and interest rolling through there as well. This year's five-year CIP that was approved has a budget of a little over $5 million. Last year was 3.7. So, you know, the council has decided to invest more in the infrastructure of the city, keep it maintained, which is a good thing for all parties involved, especially the people using the roadways, sidewalks, alleys, et cetera. Just overall, contractual and capital spending is up in this budget. Interfund transfers are up slightly in this budget. The police pension funding is up again in this budget. As we talked during the budget, hopefully with some of the pension reform laws that might start to moderate some, but this year it is up. And personnel costs in this year's budget are actually down from prior years. After the few changes that we actually had in this year's budget, the general fund wound up with a surplus of $14,584. And total capital spending between the general fund and the water sewer fund is just south of $9.3 million. So again, huge investment in the infrastructure, streets, water mains, sewer mains, everything. So that's, you know, the citizens should be proud that we're able to put that into the systems to maintain them and keep everything going for them. So that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone interested in addressing the City Council regarding the budget may do so at this time. Please approach the podium, state your name and address, and be sworn for the record. This should be comments regarding the budget. We will have citizen comment during the regular meeting as well. So any comments or questions regarding the city budget? Hearing none, there being no public comment. The City Council is scheduled to vote on the budget tonight. Upon adoption and execution of the ordinance, the city manager will publish the final version of the document and place it on file in the city clerk's office and at the Wooddale Public Library. I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the budget. Is there such a motion? Is there a second? Roll call.
Alderman Cadala. Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
The public hearing is hereby adjourned. I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cadala. Alderman Coles. Alderman Lewington. Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. A quorum is present. Would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 7, 2011? Is there a second? On the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If any citizens wish to address the City Council at this time, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address, starting with Dino and Kathy Agnos.
No.
To the podium, please. John, is the microphone on?
Good evening. My name's Cathy Agnos, and we are residents at 361 South Edgewood in Wooddale. On March 5 of this year, our home was flooded due to, what was it called? Due to timber in the main water retention pond. John Kramer and his crew came out and did indicate that to us. There wasn't a lot of rain that day, and our house basically flooded for no significant reason. John Forrest was out there. John Kramer came out as well. Mr. Police came out to see the damage as well. And, you know, we had a lot of damage done, and I just don't understand how, you know, it wasn't really our fault that we flooded. It was, your people basically said it was due to the timber caught in the pipes. So, you know, that's all I could say. My husband's going to say the rest.
First, we also want to thank John Kramer's team. John Kramer did come out that day when we came home and found 12 inches of water in the basement. His crew and everybody was very helpful. They stayed. They helped us getting out. But everybody who came from the city, all the employees that day, did say it was because of the storm and the timber that was blocking everything. John Foster had come out afterward. He did give us some recommendations. Most of them were cosmetic. If you look at it, and I had an extra sewer, an ex sewer of, sorry, ex city of Chicago sewer and sanitation person come out and look. They did concur with John that the main thing was the way the house was built, that's how it was when we bought it. The main sun pump is hooked up to the storm, and that's where the problem was. That's where the water came in from. We did take John's recommendation and disconnect from the storm, but there were some other recommendations. Those were mostly cosmetic. The main problem was being that the water came in from the storm. The other concern I have is it was brought, we did send it to Irma, and it was brought to different groups to look at. How could an investigation happen by just going from one side? No one has contacted us. No one has reached out for anything, except everybody gave us recommendations. What is the recommendation for the city to check their sewers? I understand it's private property, and I'm entitled to fix what's inside, to make sure the pumps, everything are working. Nothing had failed that day. We came home, everything was working. And then after your people came out, we were told it was because of the blockage. I had an expert look at it. The same thing was told. The pumps work, washing machines on during regular days, during heavy snowstorms, everything works properly. That day, there was a problem with the storm, being connected to the storm, that's what caused the problem. I understand everything else. We've taken the measures. That has been corrected. I appreciate everybody coming out and taking the time that allowed us to correct everything, but the bottom line was, everybody keeps avoiding. The problem was, there was a problem with the storm that day, the storm sewer, being connected to it, that's what caused the problem. So we have pictures, we have paperwork. It's been a very frustrating ordeal. We're not looking for anything. We want to plead our case. We've been talked, we've been in the House for three years. We've had problems ever since we get in. I appreciate John's group coming out this time. That's, at least we figured out what the problem was and what was causing it. In the last storm we had, after it being disconnected, there was nothing, and it was 10 times more rain than we had on the day that it flooded. So obviously, that was the problem, and that's what I've been told by several people.
If you want to give the pictures to Alderman Shockey, and then he can pass them down the row.
Give them those.
Council will take this up under executive session later. Any comments or questions? All right, we will be discussing this later tonight. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the City Council this evening? If not, I do not have any written communication. That brings me to Mayor's Report. First item is Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore I, Kenneth P. Johnson, Mayor of the City of Wooddale, do hereby proclaim April 29, 2011, as Arbor Day in the City of Wooddale, and I urge all our citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And Mr. Kramer, are we doing a tree planting? Do you want to?
Correct, Mayor. We will be doing a tree planting on the 29th corner of Wooddale and Commercial. We'll be planting a Greenspire Linden.
Thank you, sir. Streetscape Committee report. I understand Mr. Forrest is handling this.
Mayor, we still have a appointment, and then one on the left.
Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although I was not in attendance at this meeting, Mr. Clicker was there, and as you can see, he prepared the memo. At the last meeting of the Streetscape Committee, they authorized the purchase of 18 patriotic light pole banners to replace existing worn-out banners at a cost not to exceed $1,764. A little background on this, in 2009, the Streetscape Committee established a light pole banner schedule, and to facilitate this schedule, they periodically purchased light pole banners to adhere to the schedule. Recently, the Streetscape Committee inquired Public Works as to the status of our existing light pole banner inventory, and they were informed that the existing inventory of patriotic banners, which are typically displayed from mid-May through July, are worn and in need of replacement. Upon receiving this report, the Streetscape Committee made a motion at their March 8, 2010 meeting to replace the existing patriotic light pole banners. Attached to the memo is a proposal from Downtown Decorations to provide the City of Wooddale with 18 patriotic banners at a cost of $95 per banner and an estimate of shipping costs of $54. This brings the total cost of purchasing the 18 banners to $1,764. If approved, the money to purchase the banners would be taken from the Streetscape Committee budget. It's my understanding that there's approximately $30,000 available in that budget, so the funds are there.
Sir, motion to approve? Moves, is there a second? Moved and seconded on the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One other thing on the Mayor's Report. Last week, I passed out the appreciation dinner for Mayor Daley, which is occurring a week from Friday. Was there any interest from anybody in attending? If so, please call city staff if you didn't get a copy of the invitation I have one here tonight. That concludes my report. Mr. Manager?
Just one note of interest for everybody that's watching. On May 10, Finance will be sending out to all previous owners, and city stickers will be available for purchase at the Finance Department here at the City Hall. Nothing further, Mayor.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any objections to any items on the consent agenda? Alderman Winger.
Item number three.
Item three will be removed. May I have a motion to approve the agenda being items 1, 2, and 4? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now may I have a motion to approve the items on the agenda being an ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Wooddale to clarify the placement of city vehicle stickers, a resolution amending Section 6 of the City Wooddale Personnel Manual, and a contract award standby power upgrades South Water Waste Water Treatment Plant Public Works facilities to anchor Electric Corporation amount not to exceed $218,780. Is there such a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Item 1 is approved as ordinance O-11-5. Item 2 is approved as resolution R-11-18. Item 3 will be taken up on another business. That brings us to Committee Chairman Reports, Planning, Zoning, Building, and Development. Who is the alternate?
They're both gone.
Alderman Wesley?
Oh. No report, Mayor.
That brings us to Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary. Alderman Shockey.
No report, but if I may make a comment.
Alderman Shockey.
Last week, my cardiologist said I died on March 22. I had a pacemaker put in, the 24th pacemaker, whatever you call it, and just wanted to mention that because I've gotten so many cards from the city employees, from our public, not only in my ward, our ward, but in, from the whole city. I didn't know I had so many friends, and I do appreciate it. Thank you for your best wishes, and I'm saving all those cards. Thank you.
And that concludes your report.
Yes.
Public Works, Alderman Wesley, no report. Were you bringing up Alderman Wesley?
Oh, yes, I do have one report. Actually, it was brought to my attention today. We have the, as you guys know, the Addison Road project is, water main is moving forward. To move this project a little quicker, to get done quicker, and because all the traffic is involved in that area, we did receive a letter from the contractor, ALAMP, asking for us to waive, they would like to work three nights overnight to move that project moving forward. They would go 24 hours in three days. We don't know, it will be three days in a row. We don't know if it will be a date yet or anything. The reason why we brought this to attention is because we have a code in our building department that you cannot start construction from 7:00 to 7:00. I am asking this council for approval to move forward with that project, to work 24/7 due to fact with all the traffic in that area now and congestion, and they will do most of their bulk work during the day as much as possible, and continue to finish this project on time and to move forward. The reason why this is bringing to the council tonight is because we need to submit to the county a road Addison township design on the way the routing would go for the traffic. Am I missing anything there, John?
No, you're on par. Basically, we need to submit a traffic management plan and submit to the county for their approval prior to we can let ALAMP begin work. So we need to have a traffic management plan and a traffic protection plan, which says where the barricades are going, digital message boards, et cetera.
I will tell you, this project, I did visit that project today. It is going quite smooth, so far that I can tell. So I know that there's a couple aldermen in that ward, and I don't know how they feel, Bob, but to get this project moving and completed on a timely manner, I have no problem going to 24. It's not going to be, you know, just for three days. That's all they asking for, three days, to help get the connections, so.
I note for the record, you live on the opposite end of town, but...
But that's why I said I'm leaning up to the aldermen to make the decision here, Mayor. I'm not making the decision...
I understand, I'm just making light. Mr. Kramer, is this something that is going to disrupt people's sleep, and this is obviously a residential area?
Correct. It is going to be noisy. There's going to be trucks backing down the road, there's going to be gravel being dumped, there's going to be a track excavator out there. It's going to be loud. It's not going to be ridiculous, what I would consider, but there is going to be some noise associated with it.
This is three nights in a row, so for 72 hours, we'd be constantly interrupting people's sleep?
Right now...
Or can they phase it on different nights?
ALAMP requested two days. We're saying three on the off chance that it might take a third. I'm leaning more on the side of two days. What they're doing is they have five open cuts at Potter, Carter, Charmel, Gilbert, and Forest Preserve, where they have to cut across the street, open-cut the pavement, put in a concrete sleeve and a new water main. In doing that, they're going to have to excavate down, they're going to have to put in the sleeve, put in a water main, and then put temporary pavement on top of it, pouring concrete. The reason that we're asking for the road closure is to allow us to do multiple open cuts at one time, and then allowing us to backfill all the way across steel plate and temporarily put in a surface, so we don't have to disrupt traffic on a daily basis with new lane usage. If we had to do these five open cuts over a period of time, we'd have to do three phases as we went east to west across the pavement surface. We'd have to do the northbound lanes first, then plate that, move all the traffic over, which would bring four lanes of traffic down to two lanes. Then we do the center turn lane or the left, right, two lanes depending, or excuse me, the far southbound lanes, if we could do it in stages. This would allow us to do it overnight, minimal traffic disruption in the morning. We see a morning rush of northbound traffic, that's where we're feeling the squeeze now. The traffic coming home, since those both southbound lanes are open, there has been no hindrances upon the motorists that have been traveling on it. So if we were allowed to work those two to three evenings, we would have little traffic interruption, and the project would go by so much quickly, and we would probably even get done sooner than anticipated with the project by allowing this. Otherwise, we still can go back to our normal working hours, 7 to 7. I think we're still capable of getting the project done on time, but I think it would just pretty much allow for a smoother transition, diminish any traffic issues in and around Addison Road, and allow the project to go a lot smoother without the construction traffic, the bottlenecks, things associated with, in the pavement work during normal hours.
So that's your bottom-line recommendation, to approve it?
Considering the constraints we've been put under by the county to get done by July 1, I would like to have that cushion. Right now, we're on track. The project is on track. I worry about weather. Spring could get rainy. We're putting water main in the ground. If you have to work all the time in a trench box, it slows everything down. If those sides start to come in on the contractor and it's unsafe to work, too much rain, that could slow the project down, that could put us behind the eight ball completely. The county wants to be in July 1 paving Addison Road, so we have to be out of there by then. So yes, this would allow us some cushion, and I do recommend it. I understand there will be some inconveniences for those two nights with some noise. I will not lie to anybody, it will be noisy at times. It'll mainly be noisy at those intersections, so if you live close to those intersections, those are going to be the noisiest points. But you're going to hear dump trucks going back and forth, and backup alarms, and excavators, and a partner saw or two cutting some pipe. So yeah, it is going to be noisy. There's going to be lights outside, it's going to be busy. But again, a small inconvenience of a little bit of noise, then for the most part, those residents are not going to have the traffic headaches of pulling out of their driveway, into their driveway with all these multiple lane changes and closures and pavements going up, temporary pavements coming down, things like that. Sorry for the lengthy explanation, I apologize.
Okay. Comments, questions? Alderman Winger.
Thank you. Two questions, first being, Mr. Kramer, you mentioned the trench box. So doing this project in two to three nights, does that eliminate some trench work that has to be done? Or what did you mean by trench boxes?
Mr. Kramer.
Correct. A trench box is used any time that a section of water main goes in below a certain depth. Trench boxes for worker's safety, so they'll be using a trench box either way, whether we do it during the day or in the evening. It's basically a metal sleeve lowered in the ground to shore the sides of the walls. Again, when you have wet material, you'll have that trench box getting caught. It takes longer to move the trench box a little farther along, more time with the excavator to dig alongside of it.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, what does this do to the cost of the project? Does it affect the cost in any way?
No. There is a complete wash. The traffic control for doing the D2 will be offset by the minimal lane changes that will be avoided by doing the overnight closure. The only possible cost to the city may be some overtime for our resident engineer. I envision that probably to be a wash as well, because the project will get done quickly, meaning he won't have the hours at the far end. He'll be using more hours now. We'll have to pay a little bit of overtime for that, to use two REs rather than one. But again, I think for the most part, that would basically be a wash, but I do want to make you aware there might be a few overtime hours in there.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley.
John, the engineer on this project is RJN.
All right, Mr. Kramer.
Correct.
Darren, if we did it overnight, they will be out there the whole time?
Correct. RJN will be out there 24 hours a day, as long as work's going on. They're also, I'm also recommending city staff to be out there as well. So there'll be a person from the water department who will switch day hours to evening hours to be out there as well, basically just to provide some historical, excuse me, historical perspective for the underground systems that we have out there.
Alderman Wesley.
To my knowledge, this is the first time the Wooddale, City of Wooddale has been, is going to do this. I don't remember ever doing it. The only concern, I have a concern of notifying the residents. Do we know, we know which houses that are going to be affected, but do we know what time they go to work? And what time the work will be done, so they could get out of their driveway?
Mr. Kramer.
I don't envision anyone not to be able to get out of their home at any time during this. Basically, the work's going to go on 24 hours a day for those three days. They'll be working a day shift plus the evening shift. At no point do I see that there's going to be any inconveniences where people will not be able to get out of their driveways. I've made it explicitly clear to RJN and ALAMP that any time that we impact a driveway for longer than a few moments, we need to make contact with the resident beforehand and make sure that we have the ability to put their car on the side street, or at least put them on notice. Right now, most of the crossings are going at intersections, so it's going to be very minimal exposure to any of the residents for an inconvenience. If anything, they might, if they live on the side street, they might have to drive down a side street, come back around, get to Addison Road, get to Irving Park Road that way. Other than that, I don't envision anyone to be in any way, shape, or form barricaded in their home.
Alderman Wesley.
So basically, the noise will be roughly about one block in, would you say? Pretty much?
For the most part. You know, I, most of those houses are set back, those are fairly deep lots, they're not very close up to the road. Again, I think it would be the, it would be the homes that are close to those five corners are the intersections would be most affected.
I got one more thing to say. I don't mind going along with it, but I would like a record of when they go talking to the residents, of when they talk to them, like a sheet, for closing the driveway and informing the people what's going on.
Mr. Kramer.
I know it's a little more work, but I don't want to get the phone call and says, "The city never told me," and then we don't have nothing to back it up with.
Okay, I was planning on doing a letter to all the residents, another letter informing them of the closures, as much information as I can. Obviously, if we have some rain delays on this project, and I put it out a couple days beforehand, it may change. I'm going to try and give them as much notice. We're going to use the reverse 911 as we have in the past, and then I will document any resident contact that the REs make, and if I have to put staff on making contacts, we'll do that as well.
My main concern are the ones with the intersections for where the projects, where the...
where the main things are going to be. Thank you.
Any other further comments or questions? Alderman Wesley.
You, you mentioned about the county resurfacing that road. When are they going to start that?
Mr. Kramer.
We were told July 1. We needed to be done by June 30th. They were going to start July 1. I do not know if that project was let by the county yet, so I don't know if there's a definitive start date, but I will have an update for you in, at a future meeting once I do find that information out.
Mr. Mayor, could we make sure that the residents get notified on their project just as well?
I think the manager is making the note, acting manager. Yes, we will.
And he's doing a fine job.
All right, this is not on the agenda. This is not an action item. However, I do not hear any objection to proceeding with 72 hours of construction. Is that Alderman Wesley?
No comment, Mayor. You said Alderman Wesley. I would like notice when, when you're going to do this, too. Even though I don't live on the street, so.
Mr. Kramer.
Notification, just like I gave you this evening in writing, and also I'll give you a call.
I think you also have noticed when you were getting the phone calls at 12:01 and 2:00 AM in the morning. I think, I think that will happen. Despite our best efforts, there will be complaints, so. Again, I do not hear an objection to proceeding with 72 hours of construction on this project. Okay. I think you have your direction. Does that conclude your report?
It's ended my report, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Finance Administration, Alderman Winger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve a senior lunch donation request not to exceed $1,000.